Hello and welcome to Talk to Downtown. My name is Courtney Wood. I'm the Economic Development Director for the Downtown Stockton Alliance, the 501 C6 nonprofit, property-based business improvement district serving downtown Stockton. This series is intended to connect our business owners, property owners, visitors, and residents with the organizations, people, and resources which impact our community. Today, we have special guest Councilmember Brando Vio Padua. He represents District 5 on the Stockton City Council. So it's gonna be really fun to chat with him today to learn more about the work that he's doing. We'll begin by having Councilmember Vio Padua share a little bit about himself and his role in the city council. Then I'll go ahead and ask him a list of questions that I've outlined for him. And at the end, we will open it up for viewer question. So if you guys do have a question, type it in as a comment and we will get to it towards the end of the live. So welcome, everybody, and welcome, Councilmember Vio Padua. Thank you so much for your time, for being here this morning. And let's get started. Tell us a little bit about yourself and your role in the city council.
Well, good morning. Just want to say thank you for you guys having me on your show. Very honored to be here, as well as your Councilmember-elect for District 5. A little bit about me, born and raised in Stockton. Father was a butcher, mother worked at cannerys. Went to, I was born at Sierra Nevada Street 1055, same street where Genova Bakery is. The morning was beautiful, just smelling the bread. We would, every day, we'd get a loaf of bread. That was our thing in the morning with milk. Our dad would, you know, that's what it was. Walking us to school to Lottie Gresky was our thing. You know, meeting with friends. And growing up, the neighborhood around us was very traditional. Neighborhood, neighborhood watch was really back then. They would watch us kids and they would tell a tale on us. And if we were wrong, if we were past a certain time of the day, they would tell our parents. Grew up at Victory Park, that was like our childhood. Riding our bikes over there, monkey bars. Obviously, the museum, soccer, baseball. I mean, we had it, we had great parents. They taught us when we were doing wrong, when we're doing right. I had really great brothers and sisters that really, you know, if we were at a point, they would tell us, you know, how we were doing. Grew up and went to Delta College, got my A degree, graduated from high school as well, and proceeded a, I've been working in company for 15 years with Diamond, bringing a broker. And at the time, my family is really well-known in the community and political industry. My brother was a county supervisor, two-term, very proud of him. And now he's our, he's our Assembly Member. And kind of, you know, kind of brought me in his wing and showed me the learning of politics, how to give back to the community. And I've been following him since then and kind of chose my way and decided to run for office. And I'm here now as your Councilmember. I have a 10-year-old son, he's the bride in my life. Soccer's done for the year, so I've been coaching soccer for the last three years with him and a lot of his friends. There's nothing more, the most important job is being a father. It's the hardest thing, as well as being a Councilmember. It has its days, like a roller coaster, but I have no complaints. I love it and I'm just looking forward to the future, making Stockton better. So thank you for having me on your show and looking forward to, you know, more of your questions.
Awesome. Thanks for giving us a little insight into your background, you know, very local. Love to hear that you're kind of near Genova Bakery.
Yeah.
Beautiful, beautiful. And I kind of want to ask, so what drove you to run on behalf of District 5 for city council? Like, what made you want to make that decision?
Great question. At the time, I, I was the planning commissioner. So our mayor right now is Kevin Lincoln. And he was elected, you know, almost four years ago. And I was zapping through his campaign and I worked very hard and earned it. And I put my name on it and a lot of application, I was chosen. And I made a lot of great decisions in the city, bringing a lot of business entrepreneurs and making right decisions for our community. And I loved it, you know, meeting community owners and how Stockton works. And I just, I knew sooner or later that I was gonna probably run in that direction. But I waited for a little while and, you know, because every 10 years, the line changes, community, right? It rotates different areas. So if you're in District 4 right now, you'll end up being in District 5. Luckily, my line changed a little bit. I lost Victory Park, I was very little, very sad about it. You know, I really was. I'm like, man, now I got Shibley Park, I got Van Bursker. But I love all those parks, they're my homes now. Conway and all those people have been very nice to me. The community has shown me so much love and I'm just so grateful to be part of it. And I decided to run 2022. Had a few people run against me and I was victorious. You know, I kept my eyes on the community, listening to the concerns and what was needed. And hit, I listened to my brother, just, you know, knocking on doors, talking to people, learning about their concerns. And, you know, June came quick and I was victorious that day. And kind of waited till January to be your elected official. And I'm happy to be the new Councilmember for District 5.
Awesome, yes, congratulations. Again, it's your first year, love to hear it. And thanks for telling us a little bit about how you came into the role. In your own words, why is the work of the Stockton City Council so important?
It's making right decisions, listening to your constituents, what they, what they, what they want, what they've been lacking, and what's needed for our community. Our leaders, our elders, our children, our youth is the most important thing because they're the future. I'm only here for a short time, but I want to make the best of it as I can for that next person, you know, to kind of follow up my footsteps, knowing, okay, I started this, now finish it up, you know? And I have a lot of things I want to do in a short time. And I have a great cast of my colleagues. Right now, I think we have a good people that are in there working good with us. Our city manager is fantastic. He does his homework, he does his data, gives us information, he makes us look great. I think we have the best city manager that we have and we ever had. So it's real simple, you know, just, I'm a pro-business guy, bringing a business here and just looking what's best for our community to grow, bringing jobs. I'm not here, you know, and that's pretty much it.
Awesome, awesome. And just so everyone knows, what are the boundaries of District 5 right now? The district that you are representing?
Oh, Charterway going towards Van Bursker. It's a Charterway going to Van Bursker, Highway 5, to the islands, back to, what do you call it? The Port of Stockton and coming back to Wilson Way.
Okay, okay, quite a big area to cover, quite a lot to cover. And downtown's in the middle.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and I'm sure we can put up a map too to help people kind of reference it in our comments. But thank you, just in case anyone wasn't sure, you know, where's District 5? Kind of a little bit of a description for you. So as a councilperson, what are your day-to-day duties? What are the things that you're doing, your activities?
Day-to-day, every morning, I probably get from 7:30 probably till noon, I probably get about 30, 40 calls about the community, majority of our elders. You know, there's a lot of complaints, violations that I hear what's going on, you know, during the weekend, if it's, you know, trash, if it's parking issues that, you know, they've been parking for months there. And I listen and I take notes, I make sure that, you know, nine out of 10 times, I get their address, I go over there myself, speak to them, take some pictures, and making sure that I'm solving, I'm solving their problems. They are, they are probably, you know, the biggest, you know, they vote for me, they voted for me in, and I'm always gonna have my ears to listen. So they are my, they are my eyes. So I look forward to those calls because, you know, I love fixing Stockton. I love hearing that, hey, you know what, I gotta make this call. To make, to make that person happy is just music to my ears. And that's just the part of person I am, just helping the community, as well as business, right? People are always looking to open business in our community. I think that District 5, which is downtown, is probably the jewel of Stockton. But we have the warehouse, we have the water, there's always business there. So I'm always open to hear what type of business is gonna come here. I was just gonna create jobs. So, I mean, how do I help you? How do I, how do I be an asset to making this happen? So those are the type of things that I always look for. Every day's different, but I'm always ready to, you know, pull my sleeves and get to work.
Love to hear that. Yeah, it sounds like you're very hands-on, you're out there, you do work. I love that, thanks for doing it. So since you get a lot of calls, what would you say is the most common question that you're asked?
Oh, yeah.
How do you answer it? Okay.
Violations, violations, violations is the number one call. I have Ms. Boyle that calls every day, a good person, lives in my district. And there's always complaints in her area, and I can say where she lives. You know, the train, the train comes by your neighborhood and stops, and it's a hazard. And I've called Caltrans and get them involved and, you know, to make sure that these issues are going away. Noises, car, you know, car races all the time. I mean, it's different every day, but majority of it are violations. You know, or sometimes, you know, when, you know, they're saying, they're complaining about police department don't come in time. So I feel like I'm like a consultant, a cop. I'm on there, you know, I'm on my way, I want to make sure what's going on. So it's, it's, it's city council, it's really, it's a full-time job, but I love it. I wake up with the most beautiful smile, spirit. I was looking forward to hearing what's going on. Bad are good, and I want to hear mostly good, right? But even with the bad, I feel like I'm doing my work. I'm making, I'm doing what you guys chose me to be, and just helping and making our community better.
Making a difference.
Yeah.
Love it, love it. So thanks for kind of telling us some of the concerns people come to you about. Is there any question that you just get asked about your district in general? But like the most common question about District 5?
Yeah, I think it's, it's everywhere, right? Homeless. Homeless is the, is the biggest thing in our community. I have it, District 6 has it, all districts have it. And how I deal with it is I go to our waterfront, I see these camps, and I report it, you know, to our app, our Stockton app. And I take pictures, I make sure that I want it to be a safer place for our kids to go fishing, do their exercises, to have events. That is our biggest issue. But we have some good things that are coming to our community. We have a housing unit coming in about, I think we're breaking ground, I want to say, next month by St. Mary's, it's gonna bring around 220 units. So a lot of the, a lot of the homeless situation, we're always complaining about, oh, I can't go in there, they don't allow me to have my dog, or they don't allow me, I don't have my own room. Well, guess what? You have your own room now, and they allow you to have your pet. So there's no complaints.
There you go.
I think this is gonna be a great thing. You're gonna see a lot of difference in Stockton in the next few months. But, you know, we're taking step by step. And I'm just looking forward to, you know, next year, you'll see a big difference in our community.
Love it, love to hear it. Yeah, more housing is definitely needed. And I have heard that concern about animals in the past, so this is nice to see something.
No, it is. I think working with code enforcement and cleaning up, those are our biggest things. And like I said, I have my constituents that always tell me, Brando, you know, on certain, certain street, there's a big pile of junk here, come out here. And I make a phone call, I'll call code for it. So I'll call to do a cleanup and it gets done, you know? It may not get done that day, but I'll push for it, you know? I'll even say, I was been there for weeks just to get it done quicker. So, but that, those are the type of things that you have to do as your councilman, is just fight, push, 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 and getting things done. And I feel like I've been doing my job and, you know, the years I've done yet, I still have a lot of things that I want to achieve. And I just can't wait to, you know, make Stockton just a better place than it was tomorrow.
Love it, love it. So thanks for sharing a little bit about homeless, which is a big issue in your district and, you know, in the city as a whole. What other like opportunities do you see for District 5 in downtown? And what are some other challenges that you see?
Well, I think Stockton, you know, we have a new city hall gonna be coming in, hopefully next year, right? It's gonna create a lot of other jobs there as well. We just approve, not on the same area, a complex apartments of 420 units. So it's gonna bring a lot of families here, it's gonna create jobs, it's gonna create jobs in the area, you know, for downtown where the warehouse and restaurants are gonna be booming. The arena just got renamed and I think it's, yeah, and I love it. I think Jason is a great, great, great asset to our community. I love his vision and how, how I think a lot of people from out of town are gonna come here. So I'm just, I'm looking forward. I think Stockton in the next two, three years is gonna be such a beautiful place. I mean, we have the water, we have, we have the port, it's all there for us. And we just, we just gotta work together, making great decisions and creating jobs. And I believe this is gonna be, I think, the other day, I think it was a newspaper, we were 13 best cities in our, in our region. So I was very proud to hear that. And I just think, wow, you know, we're gonna get better. I can't wait till that 13 goes to 11, 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. It's gonna take a lot of work, but having that positive, you know, minded and having good people, you know, around you, working with you. Like I said, the city manager is a big part of our community that he has done and done his homework and bringing a lot of, lot of, lot of business here, a lot of jobs. So I'm very thankful of him being our city manager.
Love it. So you have big dreams, big hopes for District 5 in downtown. I love to hear it. How, oh, go ahead, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, I think one of the other things that are gonna be coming up, you know, I'll be working on, is our parks, right? Shibley obviously is my new park in Van Bursker. You know, we, a few months back, we were working on Van Bursker to revising that, that area of bringing some back, some golf, some holes back in the golf course. What else? Football, soccer, what is it, a trail. It's just gonna be the most beautiful thing for Stockton. And I'm just glad that I'm part of it. I'm working with, well, with Assembly Member, you know, we're just trying to get some grant money to make this possible. And as for our parks, you know, I want to bring water for our kids, you know, underground water, so the kids don't have to go to different parks. They shouldn't be able to. Every park should have some type of water for kids during the summer to cool down. So those are my things that are gonna be coming up next year, but I'm planning on now. So people always want to see where the tax money is going. Well, this is a vision where it's going, so you can see how I care about our kids. And that's, you know, that's our future.
Definitely, you're so right. And it gets so hot here in the summer, like, we need pools, we need water features for kids. And it attracts them to the park, it gives them a reason to go there, you know? I love it.
Yes.
So you talked just now about some of your pet projects. Do you have any other, you know, main issues that are top of mind for you? Like, when you came in to this position, you were thinking, these are my goals, this is the progress that I want to make. Are there any other missions that you have?
Well, one is, you know, parks are the biggest thing for me. I grew up at a park, they gave me childhood. And I believe some of these parks have been neglected over the years from homeless camps, right? Just not taking care of them. And, but they're in a stage of being, being taken care of, you know, one by one. And that's my job, is to push and making sure that those things are gonna be, sorry, excuse me, are gonna be taken care of, you know, for our kids. Because I get calls all the time, Councilmember, you know, there's homeless here in this area. I try to bring my, my son, my daughter here. And I'll make calls out there, I'll say, you know, these homeless people are being aggressive, not letting kids, you know, participate. And there is ordinances that, you know, you can't be staying overnight at parks. So I do call code enforcement, they do their job. And I think our police chief, McFadden, has been doing a great job as being our chief. Just a little bit ago, it's been his first, his first year as being our chief. And I think we have a great chief and I really do, he has a great vision of where we're heading and gives a great plan and I support him. But those are the things that are most important to me. And obviously, working on the homeless situation. A lot of them are in my district. And I believe that, like I was telling you, we have some, some housing opportunities that are coming up that's gonna limit it, some of them in our community. And we're gonna keep thriving and making it happen. As well as another one is, I want to bring more veteran housing into my community that we lost and I want to bring that back because I believe that veterans are the most important people in our community as well. They fought for our country, they took care of us, and it's our turn now to take care of them as they did for us. So that's, those are some of my things that I want to do. I want to, I'm gonna focus one, two, three things. I mean, when you go four, five, six, seven things, you'll never accomplish it, you know? But those are the things I want to accomplish my first year, that I'll, I will adjust on my second year and let our community know what I'm working on. So that's, that's pretty much it.
That's beautiful, those are beautiful goals, you know, great improvements to our community and supporting the people that are here. Beautiful. So what kinds of things do you take into account when you're voting on an agenda item, you know, at a city council meeting? Are you thinking about how it impacts your district specifically? Are you looking at data? Are you thinking about just what your constituents have told you? You know, what helps you to make decisions when you're voting?
So we get the agenda, you know, we have our meetings every two weeks, right? Every Tuesday, we have a closed session at 4 o'clock, 5:30 is our meetings. We get our agendas, sometimes we're lucky we get them Thursday, but majority of the time are Friday evening. So I kind of look at the questions first, right? I see what city is, city staff is recommending, right? Looking at and doing my homework. And I do a lot of research, you know, I go online, I look at, you know, a lot of the things that, making sure that the city staff is, you know, correct. And not at 10 times, you know, city managers, city staff, they do their homework. And I take my time reading, researching, asking questions. How does it look like in two, three years, you know, if we decide to go with something like this? But I love it because every, every agenda is different. You know, when it comes to business, you know, how is it gonna create jobs? How is it gonna provide jobs? So it's just, it is, it's different every, every, every other week. And I'm always looking forward to, you know, more jobs are coming here, right? And, and how I could, how I could be a great asset to it, is just, you know, getting behind it. If they're having issues, I'll call them, like, hey, you know, I saw that city staff does not recommend this. I would recommend, you know, doing these things and making it happen. So I've been behind, I've been behind that as a planning commissioner, you know? It goes, because it goes through planning first before it goes to city. And I make some great decisions and bring some great business here in our community. And I think there's gonna be a lot of great things in our pipeline coming in the next few months.
Awesome. Thanks for sharing a little insight into that. Yeah, those agenda, you know, and board packets, they're huge, right? They're pages and pages, that must take so much time. You're doing the work, doing the research. So since it's been your first year on city council, what are some decisions and initiatives that you've taken part in that you're most proud of?
There's a lot. Like I told you, there was the project for, that's gonna be coming to St. Mary's, right? For 240 units. I've been behind that, looking at it from day one. We're gonna be breaking ground, I believe, I want to say this month. Working as well with our nonprofits, right? I think that's one of our, the biggest thing that we have in our community. And I have a lot of it in my district. Without our nonprofits, what would we be? They take care of the homeless, you know, there's a lot of them that bathe them, that feed them. Who would do that? It would be a very, it'd be, it'd be very, it'd be a very terrible city if we didn't have our nonprofits. So I give back to them a lot on what I can and helping them with donations when they're having events. I'll be the first one to jump in and help them because without them, you know, they're, they're the type of people that make you look, it makes the community look good. So I want more nonprofits to come in our community, to have it hard for it, that want to make a difference in our community. Those are the, those are, those are the biggest things that I have, that I love. And our community centers as well. Our community centers are, they do a lot of great things. Van Bursker has a great director there that does a lot for our kids. They just got their They just got their uh their basketball court uh. Um floor done during during their, the flood back in January, um. There was a lot of flood in the area and and it flooded the whole entire thing. Uh they were asking me, how do we, you know, jump on this? Because they were losing events. They were losing uh uh basketball uh games, cheerleading, a lot of things and. Thankfully, uh you know, I uh I talked to city manager and we we pushed that on and. And they're very happy now that, you know, to have their events and. Um as well as Shibley, uh Shibley Park, you know? I think every community center is different and they have their own ideas and they have great directors and I'm just so. So glad to be part and helping them and I always tell them, what is it you guys need from me? You know, I don't need anything from you. I just want you guys, you know, to be working and having kids and out here, I'm gonna do my part. It's just working together is, I think, it's it's just the the key. How do we 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 make uh our community better? It's, you know, is the is the key for us.
Alright. Uh thanks for sharing kind of some of the projects you worked on so far this year. And you kind of also touched on earlier the new arena naming. So those, can you please share a little bit more about that as well as the brand new Broken Windows Grant Program?
Oh, yeah, uh. The I I we just, uh last week, I think it was the, we did the the presentation. Uh all our council members were there, the mayor was there. Uh I think the new Stockton is, I mean, they track about. Five thousand, I was hearing five thousand attendees every year. Uh I think it's gonna get even bigger and better. Um talking to Jason, I mean, he makes me excited when he talks, right? And it it's just gonna bring a lot of business to our community. I hear a a a lot of the events, a lot of uh um shows are gonna be coming here, country, rock, uh Hispanic. I mean, it's gonna be global, uh that a lot of, a lot of people from different uh communities and cities are gonna come to Stockton. And you know, that's gonna bring uh business to our restaurants, our hotels, right? And uh you know, and even when the uh baseball comes back, you know, catch a pork game, you know? Our ports uh are getting better and and every year and hopefully next year they can, you know, they can win the championship, but. Um I'm just glad that it, that that um. That the new arena has a new name and it's gonna bring uh a lot of excitement. Um and I'm excited for already that what uh a lot of the entertainment that's gonna be coming in. And once the community knows what's going on, get your tickets early because they do sell out everyone. So, you know, I was fortunate. I said everyone, there's a lot of things coming in. And I try to post of uh many of the uh entertainments coming in. Get them early because not, those seats will be gone and you're gonna have to wait till next year, so. That's that's what I'm looking for, so. Uh I'm just glad that uh it's it's that that we have a great person behind it. A great uh that's gonna bring a lot of people in our community involved.
Definitely. So yeah, the Adventist Health Arena, you know, newly named, it's fresh, fresh. Thanks for talking about that one. And you're right, there's so many great artists that are coming, coming here, you know, thanks to ASM Global. It's it's really awesome. There's a lot of exciting things going on at the arena, the Bob Hope. So yeah, it's really, really cool. Um and how about the Broken Window Program?
The Broken Window Program, right? Um it just started out too long ago. Um as you see, there's, you know, there, things happen in our community, right? Um we don't, we don't predict them, we don't, we don't look for them. Um there is crime and there's always been crime and. Fortunate, you know, um windows do get broken, that lies and. And I I I thank you for you guys in our community for stepping up and having a program that's helping a lot of our restaurants. Uh to fix their windows, right? Um i- i- is it a lot? No, but it's more than that they don't have. And I think we're heading to the right direction. Um I think that once a lot of other people hear about it. They're gonna help and it's gonna be a bigger program that's gonna help uh the future. To 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 fix a lot of their, you know, their windows, so. Uh I'm all for it, you know, anything that that could help our restaurants, our community. You know, I I don't wanna come into a a a restaurant and talk boarded up. I I wanna see the window. I wanna see our 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 people walking in, seeing us eat, right? I wanna go in there, that looks good. You know, you can't see that without a board. So this program is gonna help a lot of our our community. Um I go, this is our first time doing it and I think that, you know, there's gonna be challenges. But I think that we are, we're gonna overcome it and make it bigger and better for our community uh uh on the next, on the next round. And I just wanna be part of it. How do I, how do I make it better? How do I bring, you know, other community uh. Uh investors to help in this program? So I'm all for it. So that's that's a good thing for our community. And I just hope that other, other uh other cities get uh, we could be a blueprint for it and. They could help their their community as well. So uh A plus in our uh community for for doing this.
Yeah, it's it's launched, the city of Stockton just launched it, so. If you are, you know, commercial, your business, you have a broken window, you can submit. Yeah, you can apply for reimbursement for that window repair at your business. Um and I believe it's up to eight hundred dollars. Um so, you know, if you've had something unfortunate happen, take advantage of it.
Yeah, and and I think a lot of people are still, you know, they're challenging from uh from post COVID, right? Uh new challenges, new opportunities. Uh I think our district is still recovering, right? From all that, and and it's gonna take time, but you know, with inflation. Uh laws are 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 challenging infrastructure in our in our district, but I, I think we're really heading in the right direction. More businesses coming here. Our our city manager is uh doing his his job and uh. Making sure that we're on top of it and what's going on in our community, not right now, but what's looking at two, three years from now. And it's our job to inform our constituents, you know, and what's going on, not to panic. You know, let us know what's your concerns, how do we help you, you know, uh what's your, what's your issues from day to day, so. Those are some of the things that I as well wanted to put in there as well.
Yeah, so touching on that, um how do you receive constituent feedback? So. You said you receive a lot of calls.
I have, I have my calls every morning. Uh I have emails every morning. Um my phone uh is open to anyone. Twenty-four hours, I don't care what time it is. If I don't answer, it's either because I'm in a meeting or I'm on one of my committees. Or I'm talking to someone, but I do get back to you. And then uh even if it's not my district, I will help you. You know, I will, I'll reach out to council member, let you know, hey, you know, one of your constituents in your district has reached out to me. I have out there and if you wanna take over from here. Uh I have them also, my my one-on-one meetings that I have, I just had one. Um this past, this past month, uh I have it at the city hall. I'm having my next one, I gotta, I think it's uh, I wanna say twenty-fifth or twenty-four, twenty-third. I gotta look, I gotta, I gotta uh get with my uh with Florence Low. Florence Low, it's like, she's, she's everything. She's like uh my assistant. She's like my mom, you know, I panic. You know, even when she goes to 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 vacation, what, where are you going? For how long? But she she keep, she's fantastic, even like today. I was on the, you know, the show, so without Florence, you're here. I thank you for everything that you do for me and for all of our colleagues. Uh but, yeah, those are uh, that's that's pretty much, you know, what I wanna say as well.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so are there any other projects? Or events that you're excited about that are coming up, which you haven't already mentioned?
Yeah, um you know what, there's a, let me see, I brought a list here, a project next in District Five. Hopefully, we could talk about a public work. Um obviously, we got the the city hall gonna be coming in, hopefully. Somewhere in June of twenty-four, right? Uh we have um as well, uh street light knocking down repairs. Phase seven will uh will be in August and twenty-four. Um um let's see, citywide sidewalk repair are in November twenty-four. And that'll be on my district and a few districts. Um as well as uh our Channel Street improvements. We have the California Street Road Diet. Uh we have uh, we're gonna be doing a lot of light. Lighted crosswalk upgrades, um sidewalk curbs and gutter repair programs that we have. Um I believe Main Street, uh Complete Street is is done in July. As well, that's gonna be in District Five. Um Airport Way Bridge over Moore and Slow. Um uh will be complete by April twenty-four as well. There's a lot of things that, um and I'll, I'll I'll put it out there. There there are happening in District Five, a lot of our our districts. Uh there are are uh getting rephases, a lot of things, but um and I'm I'm glad, like, you know, yesterday. Uh you guys being part of helping a lot of our uh business, right? Um like Cancun and all these other places that, you know, re- rejected their signs, so. I'm glad that I was behind it and hearing it and a lot of it is in in the best district, which is District Five, so. I thank you for you guys being uh helpful in the helping, helping our community.
Yeah, we're happy to do it with our Business Facade Program, you know? It's coming to a close. We do still have a couple spots.
Yeah, I did. That was actually, that was one of my questions.
Couple spots left, yeah. We have about seven, seven spots.
And it's glad a lot of these um business been needed help. And I think, you know, like I said, you know, um during pre-COVID, people are still struggling. And any help, if it's just a little bit, it's a big difference for them. And I know that they just, they're well, they 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 appreciate you guys for helping. And I know that community, yeah, it's us for stepping up. Let's go visit, let's go look at, you know, uh their repairs, let's go have some food. And tha- that's how we we need to do, is just helping our community, um especially our small business as well.
Definitely. So downtown, downtown is the heart, you know, the center of District Five. What do you love about downtown Stockton?
Oh, uh. Our water, um our water, when when the sunset goes down. It's it's like a, it's like a picture, really is, like it's like a frame, like you look at it, it's beautiful. Uh I love when the kids are fishing. I love when people are cleaning up. I love when people go into restaurants. I love when I hear music in the park. Um I love downtown. It's it's it's, I I I love my district and and. And we have so much to do, so much uh that we're we're gonna do and. Um and I just can't wait uh for for, I I think it's been a great year. We have a lot of, we had a lot of great events in our downtown, Weber Point. And uh it's getting better. Every year we won awards and I wanna thank all our vendors for stepping up and. Trying new foods. I love, I mean, I'm always looking for, you know, who who has the best burger, who has the best tacos? Who has the best Italian? And I I'm not wanna lie, but I feel that District Five has the the best foods in our, in our community. You know, sorry, all all my constituents and my colleagues, but I just believe it, they do.
Yes, I love our restaurants. And speaking of, do you have maybe one or two favorite lunch spots in downtown? Can you share them?
Oh, man. Well, I I'm gonna start with Genova Bakery, okay? Because that was, I was, I grew, I was raised up uh from childhood. Um um walking in there, there's no way you're gonna walk out of a Genova Bakery not having a sandwich. They won't let you. They won't, you know, hey, you know, it you you, even if you're buying a soda or 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 uh. Even the soda, I swear, it tastes the best soda, I'm like, even though it's just Pepsi, but man, it's the best Pepsi. Uh Angelina's, Angelina's, it's in my district. Uh it's tradition, it's been there for years. Um best ravioli, best spaghetti. Um I mean, it's, it's it's nothing like it. Uh their French dip, oh my god. Uh even though there's a lot of new restaurants as well, Feds, Feds is right downtown as well. I love, uh he's a great, he's the owner's a good friend of mine. Uh he had a grand opening, that's like about a year and a half ago. He's doing fantastic. He uh he has events there, but their food, their spicy chicken, they're having dinner great. Um there's a lot, Maria's, Nana's, oh my god, their their tortillas. Uh I was just there the other day, having breakfast with a good friend of mine. Uh there's a lot of great things that, you know, uh about Stockton, but those are my. Uh special places. Every other ones that I'm forgetting, I just can't think of it right now, but you know, you guys know I love food. I love your restaurants. And if I haven't been there, let me know, I'll come visit.
Thank you. Thanks for all the shout-outs. Yeah, those are all great places, so give them a try, some local restaurants, they're really good, really good. So for downtown, where would you like to see downtown going, you know, five years from now, let's say? What would you like to see here?
Well, I want our uh our homeless situation um to be uh better, cleaned up. Uh I don't wanna see camps somewhere on our waterfront. I I don't wanna see any violence, uh I wanna see our curbs fixed, our our. Our our lights, our for safety. Um I wanna see more, more uh more restaurants. Uh I want, I want people to stay out later downtown. You know, I I think we're missing that. I need, we need more music, you know, people to stay out uh and. Just taking care of our, you know, our bringing down our violence. And I I I think, once we work on those two issues. People will come, people will stay late late, they will, you know, um you know, go to our restaurants. Hear some great music. Um you know, I and I believe that, you know, those those apartments are gonna be coming in and. Uh it's gonna, it's gonna uh create, you know, a lot of people staying out late. And I I believe our warehouse area, uh there's a lot of things that are coming in there as well. Um uh that's gonna create um people to stay now later. Um and as well as um schools, right? Uh I wanna, I wanna see more educational stuff, you know, e- even if, even a museum. Or even things about our our history in Stockton, right? Uh learning about our history and having kids go to, you know, to uh to these events and. Learning about our history. Uh but just creating jobs, really is, you know, but I'm talking good jobs, not. You know, um paycheck, paycheck. I want, I want some good jobs, people to come here and. And they could retire with a good pension, right? And I think that's, that's the future that I want here for our Stockton. For for my son, for your kids, for their kids, going on for gen- generation, generation. So those are the type of things that I wanna bring to my district, that it's gonna and. And I wanna do all those things, and I think that's, this is the type of things that I, that I want as my legacy, so. And whoever comes after me, uh you know, just making sure that, you know, um doing the right path. I was heading to, finish it up and Stockton is gonna be a better place. I mean, we're already on thirteen. It's gonna get better. Um I think we have some really good colleagues that I'm working with. Uh Councilman Blower, uh you know, our Vice Mayor, Kimmy Wormsley. Uh and uh uh Councilman Dan Wright and a a lot, rest of my colleagues as well, Michelle Padilla and our mayor. And I I really think that um we we have a good cast and I think it's gonna get better. Um voting's just around the corner. Um we're gonna be losing some seats, right? Um you know, Susan Lins and everyone else, but I see some good people that I saw there on the ballot. And I really think that um they're gonna make some good difference in our community and I'm looking forward to working with them. But uh but for right now, District Five is my, is my uh, it's my baby. It's my only thing that I care about and constituents is, you know, is my number one thing and help. And helping people and making a, a better day than it was yesterday.
Beautiful, beautiful. So more people downtown, more business, and great jobs, that's what we're looking for.
And more things for our kids, um, that's the only thing I want as well, uh, is for our youth, right? You know, we, we complain about, you know, there's not a lot of things for our youth, and, you know, we've gotta, we gotta do more for our youth, you know? Maybe there's ideas that we could use, um, you know, the porch baseball and having more events there for kids, right? We have some great parks, uh, but we need more, more things. I mean, I know a lot of stuff is during the summer, but we also need things. Um, during, during the winter, um, and there, and uh, trick or treating was a great, it was a great uh experience this year. There was a lot of trump, chuck and treat things going on in our community.
So many.
All those people participated and um doing an event. A plus for you guys, I, I, I thank you for, for doing that, because, you know, it, it's once a year for our kids and. And I know they, they, they love it, they get their uniforms and, you know, and us parents, you know, thank you all the. Moms and dads as well, staying late. Uh, I was up till like eight forty-five, nine o'clock, they were still coming to my house, I was like, wow, I was so excited. I was on my last uh, I had like five buckets of candy, I was like, man, I didn't think I was gonna go through it. I thought I was gonna have a bucket to myself for the, for the next couple of months, but I gotta go buy more candy. Yeah, it was a great night, my son was with me, but uh my helper called a night early, we were out early. In the community, trick or treating, but uh, there's a lot of good things about Stockton and uh. All the negativity, that needs to stop, it really does, uh, because there is a lot of good things here. And there's more good things than there is bad things, and all the negative people stop. If you wanna make a difference, you know, help out, you know? What do you see? What do you wanna, if you see something that's going on, you know, call us on it, you know? Participate, you know, uh, if you, if you see, you know, uh, you know, a, a, a little piece of garbage, pick it up. You know, and don't, don't just tell us, be, be helpful, you know? Uh, but that's, it's really simple, and I think it's been a great year for our community. We're growing, we're, we're getting better, uh, you know, we're getting a little bit past our, our COVID, and I think our, our, our business. Are, 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 are getting better, there's more businesses are coming in. And I can't wait till, you know, uh, what next, what next year brings, brings to Stockton, especially District Five and. And I'm just here to be an advocate to, you know, helping your business achieve, and it's uh, it's one of my. Biggest things that I love is helping, is helping others uh achieve, achieve their dreams. Um, just the other day, I was uh, at a program called uh, uh, I forgot what it was called. I got some notes here, it was called um, Breaking Patterns. And it was at the uh, at the start uh, um, um Heritage. Mexican Heritage, and it's, it's about four uh individuals that have great, great uh. Great uh achievement, opened their own business here in Stockton, uh, some came from Oakland. And they said that, oh, I'm hearing bad things about Stockton, and, you know, you're not gonna make it, and um. And I've heard a lot of their stories, you know, one from uh, being in a photo booth. She's one of the best photo booth people that takes pictures, and she had a great story. And come here to Stockton, and all the negatives she was hearing. And it's the great things that, that, that I was hearing about their stories and. How they achieve and making a great, a big, a big difference in our community, and making a life and uh, and raising children. And that's just one of their first uh, uh meetings that they're gonna have, I can't wait to the second one, I opened up for them and. There's gonna be other, other uh, other people that are gonna be joining them that have successful stories, living here in Stockton and uh. Just letting, letting people know that, hey, you know, this is a great, this is a great community. Uh, I've had a, a great successful story of, um, you know, achieving and making a great business, so. Um, I'm just, I'm, I'm just glad that I'm part of it, and I'm glad that people are hearing these type of great stories and. Just motivating them, and if the things that you are not thinking about doing, this is a great motivation speeches. Of, of now coming back and saying, you know what, I see them, I wanna do it, so I'm just glad to.
Beautiful, beautiful, okay, thank you, I've got just a couple more questions. And then we'll move to the audience questions, okay? So, you've talked a lot about what you love about what you're doing, you've talked a lot about, you know, why you're doing it, your motivation. Um, so this la- last two questions. Is there anything that you think people might be surprised to know about being a city council person? Or about District Five?
Uh, I think that is the, um, you know, my, my, my last name, it's a well-known in community. Uh, as my brother, I have a cousin is a, a supervisor as well. They all do great things in our community, and I just want them to know that, um, I'm, I'm different, I'm on my own path. You know, I have a little bit of my brother, you know, I listen to him, he's, he's one, he's one of my uh, my uh, my consultants, my. My mentor, right? I listened to him since I was a, a young kid, when he was a supervisor. You know, just asking questions, oh, why'd you vote on this, why'd you do that, right? And he's been a, a great, a great mentor of mine, um, but, um, one thing that you. To learn about me, that you, you can't tell me how to vote a certain way. And you're not gonna get that, and a lot of these, a lot of these uh, um, council members that come in. They're, they're, they have, they have puppets that tell them how to vote for, you know, money interests and all those type of things, and. I'm not that way, you, you're not gonna buy me out. Uh, I'm, I'm a person that I'm gonna, I'm gonna be in a community, I'm gonna be at pretty much every. Uh, event that is, that is having a grand opening, taking pictures with you, listening to your concerns. Um, and the, the thing is, is I love my community, and I, I care about. Our churches, I care about our community centers, I care about um, our elders. And I'm a person that uh, that wants more for our community, I, I want, like I said, uh. Fix our parks, our, our, our uh. Our youngs, our youths, I want more things for them here, and I just, uh, I'm a person that. I'm a team player, and I'm a pro business, that, that's gonna bring a lot of great things in our community. That, one thing that you'll know, I'm always gonna do my homework, and, and I'm uh. Um, I'm glad to have a great city manager, that's bringing a lot of great things and. And like I said, my, my phone is always open to you, to every, every one, I'm willing to work with you. And if I can't work with you, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna find a way how to work with you. And that's a good thing that I, I love about myself, that, you know, man, I wanna work with that guy, I, I, you know, how can I work with them? You know, I have nothing in common with them, he's a Niner fan, I mean, he's a Raider fan, I'm a Niner fan, you know, how do I, how do I make this work? So, um, I'm just, uh, I, I'm, I'm just a family man. And there's a lot of things that I'm gonna be doing for the kids. Um, look out for something I'll be doing now for artistic kids uh in the future. That, you know, um, that you're gonna be hearing from me ver- very shortly, but that's pretty much, I wanna keep it simple. Uh, just being a community, uh, making it better, hearing people's problems. Uh, no, not hiding away, not hiding from the bush, hearing the problems, you know? Um, and just, just, and the most important thing is just listening, right? And that's what people really want you to do, is just listen, you know, I'm not a politician, I'm not. Uh, I, I'm here, uh, just like one of you guys before, you know, I want, I want a, a better community. And, and that's one, one of the reasons I ran, you know, I saw the people that were running for uh, in that race against me. And I didn't, I didn't like their policies, I didn't see that, you know, they had the vision that I wanted. For, you know, our youth, our elders, and, and every, everything uh, 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 around us. So, I'm just glad, uh, uh, this is my first year, and uh, it's not over yet. I, I still have a lot of things I wanna achieve and, uh, but I've been fortunate to. Um, have some uh good colleagues, some good community leaders around me, a good uh city manager. And uh, and I'm looking forward to uh the future, uh, and what I could bring and what Stockton brings. Um, to District Five and making it better.
Thank you. It, I can tell from the way that you speak that you're really dedicated to making change. You're really dedicated to this work, and it's awesome to hear, you know, that you're voting based upon. The information that you're gathering, you know, what you are seeing, and that's awesome, you know, that you're able to vote independently. Like that, and I, I think that a lot of people will be respecting that, definitely. Um, so thank you so much for all the work that you've been doing. And you've been mentioning that people can call you if they have concerns, so we would like to put that number up, what is that number?
Yes, so you can reach me on my cell phone, which is two zero nine nine three three nineteen forty-three. You can also email me, which is um, Brando, B R A N D O dot Villa Pudua. V I L L A P U D U A at Stockton C A dot G O V. Uh, as well, I have a, a social media, Facebook, Brando Villa Pudua, the search engine, it's really easy to find me. Um, I'm gonna have pretty soon your, my one-on-one hours, that you're gonna be um seeing me pretty soon, so. Um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm very easy to find, I'm not, uh, I'm, you know, I'm not, uh, uh, what's his name, uh? Uh, I can't think of the guy's name.
Where's Waldo?
Yeah, where's Waldo, where's Waldo, yeah, no, Brando, he's right there, I. Yeah, very easy, uh, I'm easy to talk to, um, I'm funny, I love hearing people's stories. I love hearing old stories, uh, you know, invite me over for coffee, uh barbecue, you know, I love to eat. I, I love to talk, I love to, you know, hear people's uh, uh, as well, their vision of Stockton, right? Um, I think it's, you know, brainstorming together is, you know, it's not about me, it's about the community, you know? What they want, we've, you know, we lost a lot of things in the past, and a lot of things that people want. Uh, sometimes it does, it depends on, you know, in areas and district, but. Um, I'm all for more business, you know, more, more jobs, more stuff for our community, for our youth. And it's coming, I believe me, and uh, the homeless situation is gonna come as well, so I'm looking forward to it. So it's just, stay put, guys, honestly, it's uh, and we're, we're, we're heading to the right direction, I believe, yeah.
We're moving forward. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so, those were all of my questions. Let's see if there are any audience questions or comments, are you ready?
Let's shoot, let's do it.
Okay, let's see, let's see what we've got. Okay, so this comment is from. Sean Chatz, Sean Chats. Um, he's asking, how important is the collaboration of neighboring districts for your district? So how does the surrounding areas impact District Five?
How important is the coloration of every district for your district? Uh, it's very important, um, getting together with a lot of uh, you know, uh, different districts. Neighborhoods, neighborhood watches, uh, business owners, right? Um, and uh ma- making sure that, you know, how we could thrive together, right, working together. And I'm, I'm pro-business, so anyone that has ideas, that wanna collab with me. That, that uh, uh, that, that they've been neglecting, or, um, or they wanna brainstorm, I'm for it. Uh, I'm forward to working with you, I'm, I'm here to listen to you, uh, as well, on, on, on your area. And, and how we could uh make it better, how do we, you know, uh, and it all depends of, you know, what we're trying to do, but. I, I love hearing ideas, so Sean, uh, if you got my information, give me a call. I'd love to, love to talk to you and do some coffee, uh, and see how, how we could collab in your neighborhood and uh, and see your ideas.
Awesome. All right, thanks, thank you, and thank you, Sean, for your question. So the next quest, the next um, item is gonna be a comment. And it's coming from Facebook, but I won't be able to show the comment, um, here's the comment. That's not a question, but an idea, sometimes it's hard to pinpoint an exact location in the Ask Stockton app. Uh, maybe there should be a satellite image of Stockton that could make it easier to pinpoint, and that's from Zach Colsey on Facebook. Um, any thoughts there?
I love the idea, that's a great idea, uh, I know when you go in there, you know, they, they have a, a camera. A location, the type, the address, but I love the idea of satellite, uh, because you may not know where, where. You may not, you can't probably walk where you're going to see what the address is, it's good to have that satellite. Uh, it's kinda like, you know, with, with Uber, right? Where, where your direction, I love that idea, that's something maybe I wanna uh bring up to our, our, our city manager. Thank you for bringing it up, you know, I, I love hearing when people are brainstorming, bringing ideas like that. I love to hear more things like that, you know, if there's stuff that, uh, I mean, our app is, you know, uh, new, not that new, but. It's getting uh better, and ideas like that is even gonna make it even, even much, much better. So anyone that y'all are, are, are first time using our, the app, or has been using. If there's ideas out there that, you know, that you've seen that, that's not on there, please don't hesitate to uh, to email me, call me. And how we could uh, uh, make these apps, uh, you know, even better for our community and our constituents, so that's a really great question.
Awesome, thank you, thank you, Zach, for that comment, sounds like it might be something to consider for the future, so, love it. Okay, and there's another question from Zach Colsey, um, he says, hey, Mr. Villa Pudua. Would a downtown advisory board help positive impact downtown while getting youth involved? If so, why don't we have one now?
That's a great question, uh, we need more, I, I, I was just talking about that, um, to one of my colleagues as well. We do need more of those, you know, I love to have something for our youth about learning education of our Stockton. Um, our, our history, uh, you know, we have a children museum, you know, that we have for kids there. Uh, but they're, they're for, for, they're, I mean, it, it's getting bigger and better, and uh, you know, I, I love it. But we need more items, you know, for our youth, and uh, the thing is, is a lot of the things is location. Uh, and spaces, sometimes that we're very limited to do. But um, those are kind of good things that I love to have a discussion with our city manager. And talking, you know, where, what would be a good location to have something like that, and, and what is it that? That we're trying to do there, uh, and I think that youth is, is uh, the things that we need to concentrate more. And, and not just in my district, but a lot of other districts, you know, they're, they're lacking a lot of, of that area. And I think that we need that, and I think there's a lot, there's a lot of the questions that I get, we get asked. And, and a lot of our, our uh, in our community, so, um, I look, I love to chat with you and. And uh, and just kinda pick your brain and, and see, uh, you know, what, what, what. What, what, what's, what's your ideas, uh, you know? One, you know, having two brains together, we can, we can, we can make it better, so. Uh, I love the idea, please give me a call, love to sit down, I'll take you to lunch, one of my favorite spots in District Five. And uh, and uh, and just kinda go over some things uh, about uh, your ideas, so. Uh, that's a great question, thank you for, for asking that.
Love it. So, thank you again, Zach, for that question, it sounds like. Potentially there could be room there for um, youth involvement, you know, and at least a discussion about, you know, some kind of advisory board, so. Feel free to reach out to Councilmember Villa Pudua.
That was a, a great, great question, you know, I think we, we need those uh type of uh, uh. Mentor leaderships, that, you know, people, some of these kids, uh, you know, they need, sometimes they need, any help as well. I think through COVID, a lot of people, a lot of these kids, um, sometimes they, they lost. They didn't know what they're gonna do now, and I think that we need, uh, you know, some mentors for these, for these uh. For these kids and uh, give them, give them back on track and, you know, give them uh confidence, motivation. And I think those are the type of things that we need as well. You know, give them uh confidence, motivation, and I think those are the type of things that we need as well. Uh that'd be good for our our uh our youth as well.
Definitely, um especially, I feel like in the teenage range, you know, teenage, young adult, they need some positive things to do, you know? And positive involvement for them, totally agree with you, beautiful, okay, we've got just one last comment. And this is from Bruno the Husky and um this person is saying, thank you for all that you do. So with that, great work.
Oh, really, that's 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 the question, oh, tell him, thank you.
Thank you.
You have a great name, yeah, Bruno, you know, uh if I'm not friends with you on Facebook, please don't hesitate to add me. Uh if there's anything that you need in the community, uh I'm here to to listen, to help, anything above, so. Uh thank you, Bruno.
Awesome, and with that, friends and comments, um if you have other ones for Councilmember Villa, here's the foot. I just wanna remind everyone where we are at downtown S T K N. And I wanna say thank you, viewers, for tuning in and thank you so much, Councilmember Villa Pudua, for your time today, for your time answering all these questions. Telling us about the work that you've been doing and what's to come, yeah, I appreciate your time so much.
Uh it's it's been an honor uh to be on you guys' show, um I'm I'm a big, big fan of you guys. You guys do a lot for our community and I am so fortunate for you guys, uh I mean, you guys are the. Type of people that make me look good as well and I'm glad to be on your show, uh you know, you got me for the next four years, so. I wanna do more episode, I wanna let you know what's been going on since our last episode, what uh what's been achieved. What's on the pipeline and uh what's the future and and I'm just glad to be part of it, you know, and I'm looking forward to. Uh you know, being being your council member for the next few years and working with you guys and be on your show more often. And uh I I'm just, I'm very humble and I'm grateful to 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 be on your show.
Awesome, well, thank you again, thanks for all the work that you do and with that, I would just like to say, have a great day downtown, thanks, everybody.